All right.
Got it.
Cool. So I'm sorry, I can't see your faces, Jenna and Leanne. But I know what you look like, so I'm visualizing. And I have a very vivid imagination, so I'll do okay. I just wanted to start by saying that there is a ton of stuff in linked into this sort of beefed up agenda that I sent you. The original agenda is posted with our meeting, at least I think it is now. I know we were having some issues with the webpage. But what we can do after this meeting, what I would typically do is post the more robust agenda with meeting notes tucked into it. So that whatever we work through in the course of the meeting is available to the public as well. And then we can decide whether we're posting recordings or not. And I think that's a much bigger discussion, so I'll just leave it at that. And before we dive in, did anybody have any questions about where things are on the agenda? Does anybody want to move anything around?
I'm good with how it's laid out currently.
All right, so can you guys can see my screen, right?
Yes.
Okay, for the folks at home. Okay, so the first thing that I did was I kind of bulleted out the things that that we as a leadership team in the schools rely on the finance committee for. And you know, some of this is is like directed by statute or DOE guidelines. And some of this is just our practice of what we expect from our finance committee. And Leanne has actually been through most of this stuff plenty of times. She has been our finance chair in the past, so I'm probably preaching to the choir all evening here with this stuff. And I would invite you, Leanne, to jump in if there's anything that you think from your side would be helpful for folks to know.
Sure.
But my bullets are pretty simple. Simple and really complicated at the same time. Kristin and Jenna and I met briefly on Thursday night last week to talk about what the AP warrants are, the check runs that we process. And there is a statutory requirement that members of the school board sign off on that. And in those communities, the finance committee are the folks that do that work. And so I can answer more questions about that process. But I feel like we did kind of go over that, so I'm just gonna glance over it. Lead the school board budget development process, that's like six words and six months, right? So we'll spend some time talking about that down below. Review quarterly financial reports. We have in in policy and in statute as well, I think, a requirement to post quarterly financial reports, which are basically a budget to actual financial statement. Mine are a little more, I think, one of my superintendents called them poetic because I like to write words to go with my numbers and explain what's going on and what people should be looking at in those reports. And the the interesting and annoying thing about quarterly financials is that the first quarter ends at the end of September each fiscal year. And it's always, the the numbers are in in the middle of October. And it's always the moment where the board is is starting into transition with new numbers. And school is opening and we're doing the year end report from the prior year. And the first quarter gets very little love. It doesn't get focused on. The good news is that the first quarter isn't of critical importance to us in strategic planning because it's just the first quarter. There's not a lot of data there that's gonna throw us off. I will say that I've already written the first quarter financial report. I just haven't opportunity, haven't had an opportunity to present it. So that's something that we'll do as soon as the end of this week. What I may do is just send it out to electronically and have you take a look. Receive updates on other fiscal matters. That's a really loose category. But there are situations where we may take on some a project or we may be engaged in a process that has fiscal underpinnings or requires a certain knowledge of the budget financial policy. And so we'll rely on on you guys to be a sounding board and to hear what's going on and maybe help us make some decisions. Any questions about that? I don't want to lecture, but I guess.
No questions yet from me.
Shout out. I can't I can't see your facial expressions. So for the second bullet, I don't know if you had a chance to click into any of these links yet, but I'll top it up here if I can. Oh, I hate this. It's like, it doesn't have the bright little tabby things. That's a change. Come on, baby. I think it's partly because this dude adds in the way. All right, here we go. So this is just a super simple calendar. To give you an idea of the flow of the work during the course of the school year. I don't need to read all of these bullets to you, but it will kind of orient you to what's coming along. Highlights are, as I said, in in September and October, we're kicking things off at the end of September. Instead of doing the first quarter report in October, we're busy working on fiscal year financials, year end financials from the prior year. And then in December, we have our new committees. And interestingly enough, look that we get to review the quarter one financial reports. And then 10 minutes later, when December is over, we get to review quarter two. And then woven into all of this is the budget process. And we'll talk about that again in greater detail as we get to the next agenda item. But budget, 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 budget. In-house Leadership Council work is going on from December through January. Public work is going on from March through April. Excuse me, March through May. But there's report outs from the Leadership Council to the Finance Committee along the way as we're doing our work saying, hey, you know, we, you know, we've spent our time doing this and here's what's been going on. Because you're kind of the shepherds of the budget process as far as the board is concerned. I'm gonna click out of the.
Are all of your budget development meetings with the Leadership Council going to be in person this year?
We've been kind of doing a little of both. We've been doing all together meetings for preference, but then we've had some meetings that have been remote just because there's stuff going on in the building. So we have that option. What would you, what would you think, Jeff, in terms of as we're planning those?
Yeah, I mean, I think I will be in person.
Well, the full Leadership Council meetings.
Are always in person.
We're all, we've been in person. And then, you know, you get into these conversations where you're whiteboarding things and you're charting things out and saying priority, setting priorities. Yeah, it helps. I mean, you see, I talk with my hands all day long, so.
Yeah, the full, the full leadership meetings will be in person and have been all year. We've done some K to five and six through 12 specific meetings in between that have been almost all of our Leadership Council meetings.
Yeah.
In person.
And I suppose it'd be interesting to see what the is doing with their stuff as well. Are they back to full? So when we do those two days where it's presented to the Finance Committee, that they're, I think, the first year.
Actually, my entire time has been.
You've been, you've been COVID woman.
For the budgets, but like that you
In a big room.
We've done, right, historically, we've always, you know, been together to have that conversation. Because, again, I think, you know, especially as you're talking about the things as they relate to the budget, it just feels like there's a different relationship or, you know, it's between people when they're in a room together, talking about something deeply versus being online.
Yeah, I are having the opportunity to be with people because that interchange is a little more fluid and there's less hesitation and being more efficient. But certainly, you know, we have all the options. But yeah, the the in March, the two bullets at the top there, Finance Committee Preliminary Review is basically before the full board workshops, we say, who you guys go? And it could be just as simple as, here's the budget book, read it and ask me questions before we get together, depending on the timeline that we're working with. But the SBLC, School Board Leadership Council Budget Workshops, they are, I think, number one, the greatest tool we've added from my perspective since we started doing them. Because it's, it's, as Kristin said, it's two days, you know, two sessions. And we've even spread it out over three sometimes. But in-depth conversations between the board and the leadership team. Yeah. So that each individual school leader has the opportunity to present what they're asking for and why they need it and to talk about, you know, the the challenges that they're facing and the programs that they're championing. And it's just, it's a really and you get a lot of bang for the buck. And then what I feel like, what I what I've heard and what I feel like is that you walk away from those sessions with with everybody in the room feeling like they know where we're coming from, what what it is, what it is that we're trying to accomplish. And then into the broader world and being ready to to champion that work. So I don't know, Leanne, if you have any thoughts about it, because you actually saw them back in the olden days. I think your first year, you had a a real workshop with, I think I had special socks or something. So was that that year?
What was the year?
I had some rainbow unicorn budget socks that I was wearing. Can't get that online, you know?
I did think that it was more effective last year, the way that we had broken it up into multiple meetings. And and I also really liked the fact that we were able to do like the raising of the hands on the Zoom feature. So everyone had a chance to speak. Inevitably, there's usually one or two voices that kind of take over the meetings. And it just sort of evened out the playing field a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, I think we did learn from experience that doing it all at one time is just way too much for people to actually get much out of it. By the time you get to the end of the session, you were just like, yeah, whatever. So definitely, there's a lot there and it takes time to to process. So I would totally agree with that. All right, so I'm gonna tuck this back into the background again. Again, that was like just super simple, just kind of thinking about the progress through the year and what our expectations are. The last bullet in this section, apart from the fact that I linked in our webpage down here, the last bullet is one of the things we're gonna need to think about or you're gonna need to think about is how you want your relationship with the Town Council Finance Committee to be. And I put some notes in here that back when we were developing FY18 budget, we came up with the slogan, one town, one budget. And that was in reaction to a lot of political drama that seemed to be pitting the town against the school, the municipal budget against the school budget. And some really unpleasant rhetoric about how if we had an extra teacher, then that meant we couldn't have an extra firefighter. And, you know, just trying to, some folks trying to really leverage this sort of a battle, I guess, between the school budget and the town budget. And so so town and school leaders work together to overcome that and say, no, actually, you know what? We're doing what we're doing for the benefit of the entire community. And we really need to get away from this us versus them kind of stuff because it's all the same budget. So in ensuing years, we had three years where we're actually meeting jointly with the School Board Finance Committee and the Town Council Finance Committee during the budget process to make sure that people are on the same page and communicating. I will say that I met that with differing levels of enthusiasm depending on the nature of those meetings. Sometimes I felt like we were just getting together to get together. And I won't say that's wrong because, you know, you're you're building relationships, that's cool. Sometimes I felt like we were doing really good work. And last year, because we were building FY22 in a really weird environment, we kind of stepped back from that and just said, look, we're just gonna do our own thing. We're gonna present our budget to the council like we have to do and, you know, would do. But we're not gonna spend a lot of time meeting with one another along the way. We're just gonna do our regular stuff. And that was fine, too. And I feel like we communicated well. But for me, it's a little bit of a of a question mark about how we want that to be going forward and how much conversation we want to have with folks. And the the interesting thing about the makeup of the of the count of the Finance Committee right now, if you look at who's on their team, John Anderson acted as the liaison to the school board last year. Was it last year and the year before?
Just last year.
Just last year. Oh, right, he was just elected last year. And then, of course, I think you're familiar with April Seider. She's, she might know a thing or two about school finance and about the school budget. And Paul, of course, has, you know, been super supportive. So I mean, I think there's opportunity there for collaboration. And I just want to throw it out there that you know, as we move forward towards the public part of the budget process, it would be cool to build the bridge there. And I don't really know what the bridge looks like, but just to make sure that we're engaging with those folks and giving them an opportunity to support us, too.
Yeah, I mean, I see a positive relationship there. I think one thing over the years that would maybe ironed out a little bit and part of why last year was a little different from my perspective is I think it took a little bit. This one town, one budget was great until you realized that town council actually plays a very different role in the budget than we do. So I think we've sort of spent a couple of years trying to figure out like, you know, because we advocate for what like, and there's just a different role, it played a different role, right? And how it gets put out into the community. So I think there's that's, it felt pretty ironed out to me last year, but.
Yeah, I think your point's well taken because, right, the school department is one of many departments that the town council oversees.
Yeah. Yeah, and they're, you know, there have been moments of sort of discomfort, I guess you could call it, of like, are we sitting at the table as equals? Or are we coming to the table as a department to say, here, a mighty once, here is our budget?
Right.
So there's a little of that, like, you know, what if, who are we really in these conversations? And yeah, and I think it, you know, part of it depends on who's at the table.
Yeah.
And what their meeting style is, you know, or what their with their committee style is.
Yeah.
What was the timing on those meetings with Town Council in the past?
The Joint Finance Committee, the first time we that we did it in the first, it was FY19 budget year, we we started getting together during the budget process. It was late, it was like in March, April, after the budget had already been presented. And then the next year, it was like, oh, well, we should really get together earlier so we could talk about big picture stuff and we could talk about strategy. We could talk about, you know, where we're headed. So we met, I think, in January, maybe.
Yeah.
And and then had sporadic meetings throughout. And then we we kind of replicated that when we were building FY21 budget, which was in the spring of 20.
So that to me, that an early meeting like that, a joint meeting between Finance Committee of the Council and the Finance Committee of the Board of Education, I think is can be very effective. As is some early meetings between Town Manager and Superintendent, which can also be very effective. And certainly something that I'm already partially doing and planning to do. We have that connection because the more you're exchanging information and collaborating and functioning in that way early on in the process, it can be very helpful.
Yeah, because to get to know, like, last year, their their big thing was restoration, right? A position behind the moss the year before. So to know where their heads at, getting into it would be really helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. And and I think, you know, you you get to share your thinking about what the challenges are gonna be. You get to sort of put out there, okay, so this is the environment we're living in. You know, these are the things that we think we're gonna need for resources. These are gonna be our big cost drivers. You know, we have something going on that we need you to know about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you get to share that.
It was one meeting, it was usually mid-December. You know, not any more than an hour or two. And it was just exchanging, here's, here's what we're thinking is gonna be because we haven't gone through the budget process yet, right? And so but it's like, here are some things that we're forecasting are gonna be priorities for us. And to get that from the school side and then to get that from the multiple town department side a little bit. You know, it can be really helpful. So there are no kind of, hey, wait a minute, I just, that came out of nowhere. I didn't realize that was a priority. And then it's already being presented publicly and that kind of thing. So your your kind of, your path has already been kind of carved out. And and now, you know what I mean? So if there's, if there's a way to say, well, you know, and in a lot of cases for for schools, it's important because it's right around that January timeframe where you're getting your state subsidy amount. And you know what you're dealing with in terms of if there's gonna be additional resources that that's gonna impact the middle rate, just to keep what you have. Like, you're starting to get some of that information around that time, too.
Yeah, Leanne's got her hand up. She's being super polite.
It's tough to, I didn't want to interrupt. Um, one thing to, I just want to throw this out because it's a little bit of a alternate opinion on that. And last year, we had purposefully not met with the joint meeting because of the year before where it was the you will come in at 3% and we did not. And so it was, it got really acrimonious in the fact that they felt they had given us a directive. And our belief is we need to present what we need to be a successful district. And our goal and their goal may not be in alignment. And our responsibility is to ensure that we have what we need and we have those cold conversations in public, that it is a choice of, are we going to? This is what we ultimately would want. This is what we ultimately are driving towards. We can make some concession points, but not to have done all of that work without the public knowing what they're not going to be getting from us. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, and I do recall that, you know, we walked away from a few of those meetings going, okay, well, that was dumb. Why did we even bother? And I think that that's the problem, right? It's it's what is the role of the conversation? What is the role of the people in the meeting? And and our role is definitely to advocate for what the school department needs. But to Jeff's point, I think there there could be room for at least sharing the ground that we're walking on.
And meeting, and and meeting early, you have a much higher chance, in my opinion, of having the town understand what you what you're advocating for and why. And it strengthens your position, if anything, that we consider.
I'd be interested to know what Tom Hall thinks about, you know, where his team is at, whether they are interested in that kind of collaboration. I mean, I just make the assumption because I know that John and April have both been very interested in the school side of things, but.
Am I misremembering? I feel like last year was a good process. Um, the year before was brutal.
The year before was terrible.
Yeah.
And I'm last, I'd say last year was great because we didn't have those joint meetings. We did our work, they did their work.
Feel like we did, and I don't know if it was from us watching their meetings and knowing the direction they were headed, but I felt like we went blindly. Yeah. Yeah, but we did have some.
I think we all watched them and that was because I know that, like you, Sarah and I were just would discuss what came out of their meetings.
Yeah, I mean, your point is well taken, Leanne. I don't think that we're going to be meeting on equal grounds necessarily because of the political nature of our two groups. But I do feel like the opening the door to communication can't do us too much harm. I don't know, I guess we'll see, right? And I I might be overly optimistic, but maybe if Jeff could just reach out to Tom and as he would anyway, and see if there's any feeling on their part that they want to collaborate or even hear from us, you know?
And maybe we can reach out to Paul and get their schedules and at least know what.
If we know when they're meeting, we could listen to their meetings and talk about what or hear them talk about what their their goals are, at the very least. All right, so no decision needs to be taken about that. But it's just, you know, something I wanted to throw out there as part of our our thinking and our process. And I'm gonna scroll up a little bit. Does anybody have anything more that they want to add on that first part before I walk away? Or move away or whatever I do?
I'm all set for now.
All right, so in the second section, we've got talking about our meeting format and maybe scheduling and things like that. And then there's just an absolute ton of cool stuff from last year's budget, which I'll just run through like super quick and tell you what you're looking at. And then the last thing that I linked in was I linked in the meeting notes from the most recent School Board Finance Committee meeting, which was in September, beginning of September. And there were some ideas thrown out there and some goals for the coming year that I don't want us to lose sight of. And then questions slash topics of interest is just, you know, a parking lot for what else we want to make note of and talk about. So should we talk for a minute about meetings? And I think one of the things I've heard is that it will be useful for us to pre-plan when we get together and how often we need to get together before we get in on the budget calendar and then we get into budget season and everything gets crazy and we're meeting every five minutes. So from my perspective, I definitely like to see us do a meeting a month.
Yeah.
Until we get to that more insane bit. And I wonder how you folks feel about setting those dates in advance? Or is there a way that we can do? I think, Jenna, you offered to maybe do a doodle poll or something like that to find what's the right time for us to consistently get together.
Yeah, you know, I think just scheduling with this many people is just is always going to be hard. So yeah, if we can establish that sooner rather than later, I mean, are you guys up to figuring that out now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's wild. All right, let me just pull up calendars and stuff. And I'm and I'm definitely fine with a monthly meets and I potentially will just be contacting you just to get information on little things that I have no idea about. In the meantime, just all the filler stuff.
I think the monthly meeting for me, Jenna, is like, okay, I know I have that opportunity for us to be together. But if something arises and we need to address it, then. But if something arises and we need to address it, then, you know, then you pull together an ad hoc kind of impromptu thing, or you have a conversation. You know, I have worked with finance chairs where I'm on the phone with them quite a lot because we're trying to figure out just some logistics thing. Or answer questions or answer questions from the public. That's a real popular one. You know, I just got this email. What the heck do I do? Um, so I'm, I'm always ready to be in communication for whatever the need is, but I do think it will help us to have something that's pre-planned and and we're able to put it out there to the public as well.
When you set agendas last year, did you and Sarah do those together? Is that how you set them?
Okay. Um, usually, and the collaboration there, um, Jenna, from from your perspective is that you're telling me what it is that the Finance Committee would like to know or do or or talk about. And I'm telling you what tasks I need us to accomplish. And between those two things, um, then we usually be able to frame out an agenda. And I think what we would usually do is send it then to the whole team and say, hey, do you want to add, subtract? Edit, you know, is there something that's a burning question that we haven't thought of?
Okay, let's see. Is it too simple to say, you know, maybe we'll, we'll meet like the, the last, you know, Thursday of every month? Is that?
I think that's kind of a cool way to do it. Like, it is kind of simplistic, but if it's, if it's, you know, the the school board beats meets every other Thursday, if it's like that, it's, it's sometimes easier to remember. And easier public to remember. We don't have anybody that's watching us, do we?
Let's look.
Speaking of our public.
No, we do not.
Oh. All right, so today's the eighth and we could go for the last week of December. Or we could go into January. And again, it's that quarter one report that's going to be floating around, but I can send that to you electronically. And I can spend some time with Jenna just to orient her to the methodology of that.
Do we typically though try to avoid committee meetings the way we do board meetings during the vacation week?
During school breaks? Yeah, because I think families will sometimes try to take time off.
Yeah.
Do things, so. But there, are there any school breaks that fall at the end of the month?
Just December.
December. Well, sure, yeah.
I know.
That, that whole silly winter break thing. Did you say a day of the week, Gemma?
I mean, I just threw out Thursday as an example, um.
Because in in some years, we've done it as a um, we do the Finance Committee at like four and then the Board at seven, but you guys also have workshops, so that can get kind of long.
Yes, I was just thinking how, how complex that would be if there's any sort of crossover with other.
Well, the, the board meeting would never cross over if it was the last week, because the board meeting is the first and the third Thursday.
That is true. That is true. Um, do, are there other committees that have already established that? Because I knew you guys surf on different committees.
Yeah. None that I'm.
None of them established. So we could be first. We could stay clean. If we said the last Thursday in January, I mean, the last Thursday of the month, then our only issue would be that the thirtieth of December is during the holiday week. And so maybe we skip over that one and go to the sixth and then go to the twenty-seventh or something like that.
That works for me.
We decided we'd hop on the sixth, right?
Yeah, I was gonna say, we have a workshop on the sixth.
Oh, that's right. We just decided that yesterday.
Yeah. All right, so if we, if we really don't have any pressing work to do, except that work that we could do offline, we could just go to the twenty-seventh of January and then go forward from there. Are we thinking this time, four o'clock? Four o'clock on Thursday?
I think four o'clock is, oh, sorry, go ahead, Leon.
I was gonna say, I have a um, standing presentation to the execs that goes until four thirty. Um, but you guys can start and I can just come late.
Okay, well, we could make it, we could make it four thirty or we could make it five to six or, you know, it's, it can be what it is.
Yeah, I mean, if we're okay with four thirty, I can just dial in as soon as that meeting ends.
Yeah, I'm fine with four thirty.
While on the same meeting that we have, no, that's a third Thursday. Okay, just checking to see another.
Your, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's right.
No, this works.
All right, so, so I think we could say last Thursday each month. Starting on the twenty-seventh of January.
The last Thursday in February also falls in vacation?
Hmm.
Does it really?
Yes.
Oh, man. Oh, we were doing so well. I don't have my school calendar up, I just have my. So, all right, so school board is first and third. Do you want to do the second Thursday? In February? I was thinking we could just change it. And instead of having it be the last one, it would be the second Sunday. So that would be January thirteenth and February ten.
Sure.
That seems fine.
It's sort of the same pattern, but instead of the.
March ten.
April fourteenth. May twelfth.
I think, yeah, I think that works. I don't think it's affecting any.
April fourteenth.
Long break.
Vacation week. Yeah, it's right before it, right?
June ninth.
It works, it works.
For the thirteenth, January thirteenth to be the first one?
January thirteen would be the first one.
Is there someone taking notes of this meeting? Generally, one of the board members will take the committee notes.
I've been known to put notes into the um, into the agenda too, since I usually have it open.
I mean, I haven't been taking.
I haven't been taking.
Well, notes.
Well, and I think we're like, up to this point, it's really just been orientation, but I think now that we're starting decisions, it would be helpful if if one person could be the note taker. I don't have the ability to do that since I'm.
I've got it.
Capitalized here on the hour.
And agreed to second Thursday each month?
Yep.
Four thirty, and should we just make it for an hour and then we can always push it out if we need to?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Starting February. We don't want. Oh, man, we could. Let's not. And so should we continue to have in-person slash remote option? Um, I would just have Kelly set up a webinar, the same as she did tonight, and maybe it would work better.
With video.
With video. I'll already set up before we're five minutes in.
Yeah, I think the hybrid model at least currently allows for more flexibility. First, I get here on time. And I am, you know, in general, I like being in person because I like tangible items to look at. But obviously, we've been operating remotely and we're all kind of more savvy nowadays with it. And I think it's, it's fine to to continue hybrid.
Yeah, well, and at the moment with the meeting, I'll, we have a pretty good setup here so that if everybody decided they wanted to come, they just come. And if they didn't, we have the capacity to run it as a hybrid. So that's cool. Um, the, we're already at four forty-seven and I've just got this sort of big wild heap of budget stuff. Um, which is mostly an orientation to things that two of you will have lived through. Um, but just a recap of of what the work is really in terms of the budget. So what I've linked in here, this little school budget basics thing, I guess I'll pop that up and we'll play. Yeah, see, well, cool. Um, this is just a little mini narrative. Um, Kristen had asked the other night while we were talking about describing how the funds work, the different funds in the school budget. Um, so I threw a little bit in there about the budget structure. And then um, I've also linked in this voter categories description sheet because the way that we organize the budget is kind of weird. It's like, why do you have middle school guidance over here and you have libraries over there? And you have teachers in this spot and that's organized um, specifically under the statute that the state created for the voters. So that's an interesting little piece of information in that way. And then it talks about how the leadership team does their budget process. Because that's the part that you guys aren't always sitting in on in the ba, the beginning piece of it. Um, so there's a lot of commentary about how that all works. And then um, the budget book gets a little war. Especially, and then the public process. So that's a nice little read, um, budget, budget one O one. And
I know you have a lot to get, I don't want to slow you down, but one thing that has sort of in my mind, and I know we didn't do them last year, but we did the year before was, and I think I did them, I think I did them with you at eight corners where one of the board, the members will go to the listening sessions.
Yeah, we were just talking about that the other day because what, what we, what we to last year in hybrid mode was that the building leaders ran their own. Because we didn't want to be in and out of each other's space.
So you didn't.
We did not attend. We could. Yeah, in fact, I sat in on the high school one just because I was interested and um, you know, we were invited to them. Different uh, whole central office leaders sat in on different ones.
Yeah, we all shared that.
We all were.
Responsibility. Check different people sat in on different ones.
And took notes. Um, but we didn't go physically into the schools and we've had some debates about how effective that was. And I think, which one did you first see?
We did them last year online, now that you say that, and then I came. Um, I went to eight corners and it was so.
We had a good meeting at eight corners because there were so many people there.
Yep, and that same theme just came up, like it was a really eye-opening thing as a board member to hear the teachers speak so passionately about support that they needed in their classrooms. It just added something, I think, when you were going to the budget to think about it. Oh, yeah, so many teachers came and shared.
Right. So I think what we were struggling with was the, the uh, well, how to, how to manage that and to make it effective and to hear all the voices. And, you know, I, I think eight corners was a great example when the one that you were talking about that I was at. Because it was a big crowd and it was a lot of entertainments, a lot of discussion. Um, I went to one of the middle school and it was two people.
Yes, I think one like that's.
And, right, and so, so it was like, how do you engage and and how do you make sure that your building leader is facilitating those kind of, kind of conversations on, on the regular kind of, and and, you know, making it more integrated into their conversations with their regular faculty meetings and and their leadership meetings. And, and that's kind of how it was done in the past. So we're, we're kind of feeling like we might tip back more in that direction. Um, but I do recognize the value of that sort of witness from the ground floor for you guys, so.
Liam, was that something that you guys added? Like the year before I was on the board?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Do you think that's something that's important to, to continue? I don't want to put you on the spot.
It's okay, um. Yes and no. I think the piece that makes it really hard because some of the feedback that I have gotten from folks is that they're uncomfortable with having that conversation in front of others, in front of their building leadership. Because sometimes it feels like they're not towing
Yeah.
the company line.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I do think for the folks that come out and say what they're feeling, it is wicked eye-opening because I did one at Pleasant Hill and it was just great to hear the feedback.
Yeah.
You know, if, if you've got people who are really strong and are willing to say what's on their mind, it's great to hear it directly from their mouths.
Yeah, I think, I think a little bit the worry for me is that then there's an expectation that the building leader is going to take that feedback or that input. And they have the responsibility of crafting a budget that may not, at the end of the day, look exactly like that individual really wanted it to look.
Yep.
And so you don't want to do like a bait and switch and say, hey, tell me your wishes and I will make it so. And then Santa didn't bring the pony and it kind of stinks, right? So, I mean, there's that balance in it.
Yeah.
But I, I so get what Leanne is saying because I really enjoyed those sessions myself where I was hearing like, really what's going on on the ground floor. And, you know, what the, the true experience is. So I think we have to brainstorm a little bit about, as a leadership team, about how to bring some of that witness into the process without it necessarily being that same format.
Thank you.
Good question. Um, so the next link is the old budget calendar from last year. This one is the um, the public calendar, the public portion of the process. And it includes all the meetings that are listed out in that other document of all the stuff that we do to get to budget. Um, I'm working on a new version of this. I won't have the town's input to that of what they're doing until uh, usually January. For them to actually mail down their dates, but usually what Colette and I do, Colette's the town manager's assistant. Um, we'll just collaborate on kind of taking the old calendar and bringing it forward and putting the dates right. And then share that with Tom Hall and and his team. And they figure out, you know, do we want to do what we did before? Or do we need to wiggle that at all? Um, the biggest attachment in here is the budget book. Um, and I talk about how the, the in my school budget basics, the budget book was invented uh, to replace a, a list of line items on a spreadsheet with a summary page that was our budget back in the older days. It was sad. It was in like Times New Roman and it was in a small font and it was terrible. Um, that's at the back of the book now. And the book itself is now this marvelous celebration and explanation of what goes on in school. So um, you know, I think that is another thing that I'm really proud of that we've developed over the years. And I think, you know, the goal is to make the school budget accessible to somebody who's not, you know, into looking at spreadsheets, like what's really going on, when you really need these resources. Um, there's two video streams linked in here. Those are the budget workshop that Kristen was talking about. So that's actually the recording of those workshops, the two days that we did last spring. Um, and then this budget process worksheet. So here. This is another tool that we've used um, to kind of um, document the changes in the budget as we go along and kind of keep a little tally of what's gone up and what's gone down and what's happened during the budget process. Um, this has been really helpful, I think, as a tool for the public when we go in and out of these meetings and first reading, the second reading and committee work. And and we're trying to say, well, what did we say we were going to do about that? And and it's all in here. So this is laid out so that your first section is what's passed up first reading. And then the middle part is all the work that you do between first reading and second reading and taking your votes. Um, so that's all the, all the adjustments that we've made. Some of them because we've made decisions, some of them because we've got better information. So like you see, Anthem rates went down. That's not because I decided I didn't want to pay as much for Anthem. It's because Anthem came out with their premiums and they were lower than what we expected. But then there's choices in here as well. So that's another, I think, another effective tool. So that's another, I think, another effective tool. The things that we adjusted, that we decided we were going to adjust before we voted. This is the capital budget section and then the impact on the budget overall between first and second reading.
If I remember correctly, I think council appreciated seeing this.
Well, I think it's, yeah, and, and there's so much kind of horse trading going on in the jury process that you've got. And unless you're keeping this horse hard, now I'm mixing my metaphors, but you, you don't it's like, what, what did we say we were going to do about that? Were we putting that one up or taking that one down and moving this one there? So this is like, this is the running tally of the choices that you've made and the, and the, and the changes that you've been able to make. So that's kind of a useful piece. So that's all what's in there and that's kind of like budget one oh one, budget process one oh one. And I thought if I just throw all that material out there, then, then you guys can take a look and a couple of, through a couple of lenses, one is to say, yeah, we like that, that's cool, we do, let's have more of that. Two is, oh, hey, I really wish we could look at it in a different way. Is there a way that we could reorganize things? And three is, if they bring up, if it brings up questions, like, what did we, why would we be doing that? And, you know, what was our choice? You know, what's going on here? So there.
Jenna's gonna love watching those videos.
Yeah, I think you might have to do them in little chunks, but it's like, it's like Netflix now. You can just watch it when you have time for an episode.
Yeah, it's, you know, something you do right before you go to sleep.
Yeah, you could, you can read a few spreadsheets before bed, right? So we're, we're basically right at five o'clock. Do we want to take a minute and peek into the meeting notes from September first? Or do we want to just leave that for the next morning?
I think just bearing in mind other people's time, if I, I have the time, I can look over it quickly. I don't know if you guys have any, I mean, any other engagements.
I'm fine. You want to just peek in?
Yeah.
Well, they, we'll just pop it open here and, you know, again, I don't think this is, oh, it's doing that funny thing again, isn't it? Yeah, that one. There she goes. So this was September first. The start of the school year, our last get together was to just kind of brainstorm what it was that we thought at that time was going to be our focus for the school year. Boy, I didn't even think about capital reserve fund tonight.
I was just gonna say that we're thinking about workshop.
We were thinking about workshop, so.
Definitely.
I'll put that on our January agenda. Some stuff about working with the policy committee, adjusting it.
We decided last night to drop that for now. Is that right, Leanne? Is that what we just talked about last night?
Um. I didn't think that we have. Oh, go ahead, Kristen. What?
Weren't we waiting on the charter stuff to be done by council?
Yes. That's right.
So that, yeah, there's no point in our messing around with our policies to align with, with something that is going to change, yeah. Collaboration with town council, that, and we touched on that quite a bit just now. And of course, I think we all kind of have the turf field in the back of our minds. Do we have the K twelve, the K two building solution on here?
The new school.
The building committee stuff. I mean, that, that isn't necessarily the work of the finance committee though. It's kind of the work of the board as a whole and, and the leadership team, so.
Yeah, I mean, will any financial requests for that come through? If there's more funding needed?
Well, yeah, we talked about the capital budget and The other thing that we didn't really talk about tonight is the grant funds, the Esser funds and the CRF funds and, and there was a wish on the part of this team in September to, and all right, right through last year was to make sure that we kept communicating out to the public. Hey, you got four million dollars, what'd you do with it? So that I think going into the next budget cycle, I think we're going to hear, hey, you got four million dollars, why are you back here? I think that'll definitely be part of our conversation.
I think that the the charter and jack one is going to be large, like that's something we'll probably the board's going to be curious to hear where that has met it out. I don't know where you guys are at in the process, but yeah, that's.
I think Jeff is working on some notes to, to get out to the board. We've had a couple of meetings with Water and Current so far, which is the engineering firm.
Yeah. Oh, I was talking about like taking over.
Oh, you mean that the management?
Yes, the management.
Because I have a huge budget implications, taking over the management of school facilities really.
Right.
From community services.
Yeah, we haven't had any kind of substantive conversations about that at all.
That's just been, that's just been floating on the horizon.
Yeah, that's been floating out there, like what would that even look like? But there have been no substantive conversations or plans along those lines at all.
I think that's something that, that's more of a goal for Todd Sousa than it is for anybody else, but I know that Tom wants to engage this up in new conversations now that we've had a team and leadership, so. So that's a thing for sure. And that's on there. Right. We did some of these things. We did, Sarah was thinking about some ideas about the grant funds and how to put them in a kite chart or something interesting. And I kind of never really did anything about that. And she decided to not run for reelection, so the heck with her. I hope you're watching, Sarah. She has nothing better to do. But that's definitely, I mean, that, that's definitely on my to-do list is to make sure that we're reporting out on all those federal grants and giving the public a little bit of an update as we headed to the new.
Do you mean just the COVID stuff or do you mean like all the title one stuff that we always?
I mean COVID stuff, because the stuff that we always get, all of the stuff is always in our quarterly financials. And, you know, it's, it's always a topic of conversation, like local entitlement in the normal world is the biggest one that we get. That's the special education grant. So that always comes up in the context of the special education budget and it's, you know, it's on the financial, but the the COVID money is what everybody got excited about.
Yeah.
Because it's like, you know, big bucks raining from heaven. Exciting things to be done and, and in an exciting environment of a pandemic. So that's really what I'm thinking of, is to say, hey, yeah, we're kind of, you know, we closed the books on that. There's a little bit left. There, there will still be a little bit that we can use in FY twenty-three.
Yeah.
Just a smidge.
I ask because I personally get like not confused by, but I feel like I have no grasp of how the regular title funding impacts the budget that the board works on. Like I know that that's separate from what we do, but it has to have implications for us, right? I guess I've never seen how they interact.
I mean, the other reality is that the title funding that we get is so limited.
Yes.
Because of our status.
Yeah.
That, you know, we're not talking about millions of dollars. We're, you know, talking in the range of just over a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, I think that's like even known and important thing to put out there.
Yeah.
You might hear of other towns who get a million dollars from Title One. That's not us.
Lots of millions, lots of millions other towns, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm going to be working on the, um, the narrative, the storytelling piece of the quarter one financials. I've got the numbers because I need to know what's going on and I analyze them, but that might be a, a good place to sort of plug in some, hey, this is what Title One is and here's how much we got and
Yeah.
and actually call some attention to the, the function of it.
Allocated. Yeah, I mean, I know Leanne and I, last year tried to, I mean, we would sit there and be like, oh my God. Look what they got. Oh, my God. On Title One, yeah, it's, it's really eye-opening to see.
Based on free and reduced lunch.
But are they changing that? Like, I think that's an interesting thing to talk about.
Well, the first, and the first round of COVID relief fund, relief funds, the formula was created by, was not based on Title One allocations. And it was based on straight up numbers. And, and so the percentage, it was, it was
Everyone benefited.
Everyone benefited. And so the amount was off the charts in comparison to the, the second and third rounds, which were much more tied in and focused, obviously, on those Title One numbers, which means, you know, Scarborough and and other similar districts got virtually nothing, or not virtually nothing, but much, 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 much less.
Yeah, there was one round when it was virtually.
A hundred, hundred thousand was the littlest one.
Right.
Littlest, Jenna had one, but yeah, so I'm going to think about trying to incorporate into the narrative for the quarterly report a little bit more info. Because I think that would be a good place for it because if somebody's looking at your financials and reading the story and it's just a label at this point, so why not explain it a little bit further? We spend so much energy focusing on the operating budget and the things that we actually have more control over.
Yeah.
That, you know, we lose sight of these things and then people start to wonder about these mysterious funds that are out there.
I also have some curiosity about what these free lunches are doing to our budget and how, how that interacts because we don't we lose money on that, right? So we're going, are we even making up or is that not true anymore?
We're at the point right now where we're actually bringing in quite a bit.
Oh, good.
Which is awesome.
The reimbursement, I was just talking with.
It's kind of been the cost.
That's amazing.
The, and we're, we are serving virtually every student in the district, like the we always talk with Peter today about it, just checking in with him. He was saying what, like, you know, you've got the, the demand is through the roof. I mean, it's like quadruple the number of meals, probably more than that than what we were serving.
Breakfast is like unbelievable.
On top of the fact that we've had, yeah, breakfast and then, I mean, almost every single kid in the district is eating school lunch.
So that's making it more cost-effective to do it.
Right.
Well. For, for example, he was saying, he was saying the, the reimbursement amount went, you know, for, I don't know if this was like per month or per year or whatever. He was just like, it was like ten times.
Right, because what happens is they'll reimburse you, let's say like four dollars and fifteen cents for every lunch. And the lunch costs two dollars and thirty-seven cents to make.
Yeah.
Right? So on a per student basis, you're making like a quantifiable amount of money. But that, and then we have to obviously build in our other costs, right? Like our labor costs.
Which is sort of where we were losing out before.
Right.
Right, and you're running a deficit, but that's, you know, that's, that's.
That's, that's pretty good. The one place where
Not a worry.
One place where I think the loss of the free and reduced status is going to because if they don't, or not just Title One, but any of, any grant that's based on need.
Yeah.
That's been the default measure of need in the state of Maine forever.
Yeah.
Like, oh, well, let's check your free and reduced numbers. And, and right now our free and reduced numbers are like, you know, five percent because nobody's filling out.
Probably under-reported.
Because nobody needs to fill out the forms because they don't eat free lunch. So that's, that's every district this phase of that. But, you know, and hopefully every district sort of goes down and it's like grading on a curve where everybody's you know, moving in the same direction.
But that was, that was a real worry early on in, in COVID was the, the, the deficit that you're running with food service because we just all districts made the decision, you know what, we're feeding everybody. We're just doing it. And, but the, the state, the state stepped up and has covered that. And so that's no longer, at least right now, anyway, no longer a concern.
Right, yeah.
For now, it's, yeah, it, for now, it's, it's it's great. It's a win-win because the kids are eating and we're not losing money on it. And yeah, it's, it's a wonderful thing. And nobody has to worry about whether they can afford it or not. Beautiful, thanks. Hey, I've got so many tabs in here. Let's see. So I think that we accomplished a whole hell of a lot of stuff. And can I say that on?
You did, you did say. And we don't have any like bleeping out.
You can't go back and take that out. Yeah, I'm sure that, that nobody in our community has heard the expression hell of a I'll say it again. I think Jenna, probably what the next thing I would do is maybe get a little draft agenda going for the thirteenth of January. And share that and see if there's some things that we, you know, want to tackle right up front. I just made a few notes about what, what that might be. And then we can go from there. We can figure out what we want to do. And the cool thing is that January and February we'll just be updating like quick little soundbites about what we're doing with the budget process, but it won't be until we get into March that we really have to bite down and mess around with that.
And did we land on a time? Because I'll have Kelly publish these on the.
Oh, cool. Yeah, four thirty to five thirty, I think is what I said.
Okay.
Starting on January thirteenth, every Saturday. So yeah, she can even set up the little webinars and things ahead of time, so we're not messing around with it.
Jenna, do you feel overwhelmed?
It is a lot to digest all in one sitting and I know I'm not going to grasp it all in, in just this one session. So yeah, I look forward to our upcoming meetings just to get filled in some more also on all these little nuanced things.
You're, you're absolutely right, Jenna. And, and please do not hesitate to reach out to me at any time. To just, you know, if, if you're reading through something and you're like, what does this mean? Help me out. Just, just give me a call or, or email me and.
Yeah, well, I already, I already ran off all of these copies. You know, my nighttime reading.
Get you some new, new toner.
And if you need a copy of last year's budget book, we probably have
I have a.
Some copies here if you, you know, want to save yourself some, some printing and a few trees.
Sounds like a good plan.
Yeah, I have one of those on my desk. And the town has a budget book too, so we're part of that. So I have one of those as well. But yeah, lots to absorb for, for certain, absolutely. I've, I've only been doing it twenty years and I'm starting to catch on.
There's a lot.
You'll, you'll get there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, no, no doubt. And I, and I think, you know, having you guys who have been on the board for a little while longer than I have, can provide a lot more insight also on a lot of these.
Oh, yeah. Definitely ask us any questions. Leanne has a better memory than me, to be honest.
Teamwork, teamwork. Are we, are we good, guys? You want to go have supper?
Yes.
Yeah.
But we didn't do public comment, but we have no public, right?
There is no public.
No public, therefore no public comment.
Correct. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, guys. Have a great night.
You too.
Thank you. See you soon.